...regular meeting of the city council to order Tuesday, August 8th at 6:00 PM. Please make sure your cellphones are turned off or low, please. And we will begin this evening by an invitation offered by Councilman Barudy, followed by the pledge of allegiance by Chief Thompson. And you may stand if you wish.
Dear Lord, thank you for this wonderful community we live in and especially the rains we've been getting recently. Thank you for all the blessings we have and the opportunities that we have just living here among friends and family and probably the nicest place I've ever been through. You just help us as we get through this evening with the -- give us the wisdom that we need to do the work of the people and keep our minds alert and open to ideas that we may not have thought about and just in these times of discussions and just keep our tempers in check and our minds alert in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen, for getting us started this evening. Item number two is the -- item number one is announcements of community interest. Ms. Craig, are you doing those or Kim?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
The kids triathlon will be held August 19th in Singing Wind Park and preregistration is online at curvilletx.gov or at the Parks Office located at 2385 Bandera Highway. The fee is $15 with discounts available for families with multiple children. Discounts are not available online. The annual Wet 'n Wag event will also be held August 19th at the Olympic Pool. Friendly dogs are welcome to play and take a dip in the pool at this free event.
Current proof of rabies vaccination is required upon entry.
The event starts at 5:00 PM. The punt pass and kick event will be held Saturday, August 20th at Antler Stadium, beginning at 2:00 PM. This event is free and open for children ages six to 15 years. And for more information on those events, a person may call the Parks Department at (257) 7300. Also, the Buttholesworth Memorial Library will be celebrating their 50th anniversary on August 26th at 10:00 AM. The public is encouraged to attend this celebration at the library. And Tech Dot will begin repairs to State Highway 27 between Harper Road and Sidney Baker every Sunday night beginning August 13th through every Thursday night through August 31st. Lane closures will start at 7:00 PM and be removed by 6:00 AM. Tech Dot may also do some pavement repairs on State Highway 27 by Walmart and Spur 98 and State Highway 27 at Loop 534. Tech Dot plans to have all lanes open during the day. And for additional information, call Tech Dot. It's (257) 8444.
Do you want to have any other announcements? If not, we'll move to item number two, which is the visitors and citizens forum. I have one who wishes to speak. If you would look up on either side, you will see the terms by which you may participate. Ms. Burton, did you wish to speak in this section?
Yes.
You didn't have a number. Okay.
Barbara Burton, 235 Guadalupe Street. It's been a while since I've been to a council meeting and I'm not here to grouse tonight. I'm here to actually offer some thanks. Number one, I'm really pleased that we're using LED streetlights now. We're saving a lot of money doing that. I do want to give my thanks to Mr. Hoppy as well as Joel Miners of the Street Department for taking time over the last few months to get K-Pub to come out and actually level the light that was put at my intersection because it was acting as a spotlight on my guest cottages. And it took a little while, but it got done. And I want to offer my thanks to Mr. Hoppy and Joel Miners for intervening on that. So, second thing on my list is what I've been loving referring to is the Zika pit, which is a bunch of standing water that has developed at the outflow of the storm drain right next to my property. This situation was created by the sewer contractor that came in there three years ago and put the new sewer main in. Mr. Parton assured me that the sewer contractor would take care of this situation. The contractor essentially created a berm that disallowed water from draining. Again, Joel Miners of the Street Department has been working on this diligently for three years, trying to fix it. And I think we finally got it done this time. But what I want to put on the record is the citizens shouldn't have to be paying for this. The sewer contractor should pay for it. Mr. Parton assured me that the contractor would be responsible for correcting this situation, and they did not. So, there have been a lot of man-hours that have gone into it, a lot of heavy equipment and, you know, just a whole lot of work that's gone into making this right. So, I think it's right now after that four inches of rain we got the other night. There's a few little pools here and there, Mr. Hoppy, but not too bad. So, that's a good thing. So, again, I just wanted to offer my thanks for these couple of things that have been done, and I appreciate it.
Thank you for bringing it to our attention. Good to see you again. Okay, item number three is recognitions. Ms. Tara Bushnell with UGRA and Mr. Ray Buck have something I believe they wish to say. Or at least one of the two.
I love the lady that's a worm.
Yeah. I know that story.
Well, good evening. It's just going a little bit on its own. There we go. Thank you very much for the opportunity to talk to you about the 14th Annual River Cleanup. It was held on July 22nd, and we had 27 local businesses and organizations that sponsored the cleanup as well as 550 participants that got out there and picked up trash. They removed 12,025 pounds of trash, which was about 2,200 pounds of scrap metal included in that as well as 34 tires. So, it was a great event. We had a record number of volunteers preregister for the event. They picked up their supplies. A lot of them picked up their supplies ahead of time, and those that registered that day as well were kind of deployed to different locations throughout Kerr County to clean up. We had a lot of individuals and families that participated, but also groups as well through work, through church, through civic organizations, through different businesses. And we even had the Mayor's Youth Advisory Council had a team together to for the river cleanup.
Yes, we have a TV there we found in the creek.
Yep. So, all of those groups brought -- they cleaned up for about three hours, brought their trash back to Flat Rock Park. We made a big pile there down by the boat ramp, found all sorts of things. You see a shopping cart, hot water heater, carpet, barrels, appliances, those tires. And that's in addition to just those cans and bottles and other items that you would expect to find.
Was anything in the safe, Tara?
No, the door was blown off the safe. You're -- we'll talk about that in a second.
Wow.
So, this is the 10th year that we partnered with the City of Kerrville on the river cleanup. And we just couldn't be more thankful for the support. Just with a simple email, I get great assurances from your staff. Yes, we're on board. Anything you need, we'll help you. And that's been a huge support over the years. Specifically, I'd like to thank Stuart Barron and Joel Miners for lending the resources of their team. You can see Brandon Kelly there at the controls on that grapple truck, helping to remove that big pile of trash. Now, in addition, we had Isaac Rodriguez and Ernie Carillo and Philip Garcia that helped out. The day before the event as well, they dropped off some different barrels and cones to me for us for setting up. And they went to one of the satellite locations and picked up trash as well as removed it from Flat Rock Park. And they had to make two trips this year because we had so much. And then Brandon also went down and got that safe. We had some volunteers that just barely were able to push this safe out of the river up onto the bank in Flat Rock Park, and they couldn't get it any further. So, he went down there and grabbed it for him. And also, thank you very much to the city for paying for the disposal fees for all of that trash as well. So, after the volunteers dropped off their trash, they -- I don't know why it's advancing. I apologize about that. They picked up their free T-shirts and hot dog tickets and raffle tickets. And then when time permitting, they were able to peruse our ecological fair exhibits where we had different groups that shared information about the Guadalupe River, about the ecology of the river as well. And then we all gathered for our wrap-up events, our wrap-up comments on our raffle. We had over 35 prizes in the raffle. And I thank again Ashley Boyle and Josh White of the Parks and Recreation Department for loaning us the PA system. Sorry about that, that we used at the event. So, this is just a list of all of the sponsors that contributed to the river cleanup. And in addition to working with the City of Kerrville on this one event, we've also had the opportunity over the years that when we're approached by a small group throughout other times of year that want to do a cleanup event, that we work together to get them the supplies and the trash disposal that they need for those. This year, we had one little fun component. I wanted to share a new addition to the river cleanup, which was our Trash Transformed Workshop. So, we had Debbie Minns of the Kerr Arts and Cultural Center staked out down there at the trash pile, and she was pulling items out and reserving them to be used in a workshop that was held last week for kids ages nine and up. So, they took those items and recreated them, gave them a new life. These are some of their creations. We had a reception last Thursday evening, but if you didn't have a chance to see them, we've opened a temporary art gallery in the UGRA boardroom for the month of August where you can come down and look at some of those creations from the river cleanup. So, again, I've been so grateful to be able to coordinate with your staff on these projects and look forward to another year of working together.
And thank you to UGRA for getting your board members out there and volunteers and making all this happen because, you know, if people would just be responsible, we wouldn't have to do all this work. But it really is a great community effort. It's a great time to work together and appreciate y'all coming up with this and doing it from year to year.
Thank you.
If we didn't have it, where would we have gotten all that art?
You could find artwork in my garage.
Oh, okay.
Yes, it's not a problem. Okay, thank you very much. Item number four A, B, and C is the -- is a consent agenda. Does anybody wish to have any items removed from the consent agenda? Seeing none, I will look for a motion to approve items four A, B, and C.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and we have a second. All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries five to zero. Item number five A is the ordinance, second and final reading. Ordinance number 2017-15 authorizing the city manager to execute a commercial contract on improved property for an approximate 2.15 acre tract of land out of the Walter Fosgate survey number 120, abstract number 138, within the city of Kerrville, Kerr County, Texas, more commonly known as the former city hall site located at 800 Junction Highway. Authorizing the city manager to execute a special warranty deed to convey this property and to take any other reasonable and necessary action to close on the sale of the property, repealing all conflicting ordinances and providing for severability and declaring an effective date. Again, this is the second and final reading. Are there any changes?
No.
Having heard none, I will look for a motion to approve ordinance 2017-15 on second reading. We have a motion and you have a --
Second.
Okay? Or all seconds. Okay, we have a motion and a second down here, Ms. Craig. All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries five to zero. Item number six A is ordinance first reading. Ordinance number 2017-16 annexing an approximate 11.341 acre tract out of the William Watts survey number 65, abstract number 364. Said territory being adjacent to the corporate limits of the city of Kerrville, Texas, generally located adjacent to property within the Comanche Trace Residential Subdivision, which is located along State Highway 173, describing the territory to be annexed, adopting a service plan for the territory annexed and establishing a zoning for the area annexed. Ms. Consul, are you going to present? While she's coming, let me just say that we have been presented with this conceptually before as well as the Planning and Zoning Commission. They conducted a public hearing on this item June 1st, and the city council held its first required public hearing on July 11th and the second on July the 25th. So, we are now in the place to listen to whether or not we adopt ordinance on first reading.
Yes, ma'am. I have nothing to add to what's already come before you. There will be one more reading, and that was your second reading. And unless there are any questions, then I have nothing to add at this time.
Are there any questions from Ms. Consul by council? Any questions from the audience? If not, I will look for a motion to approve ordinance number 2017-16 on first reading.
I move to approve ordinance 2017-16.
We have a motion.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries five to zero. At this time, we will recess the regular council meeting at 6:14, and we will convene our meeting of the City of Kerrville Employee Benefits Trust. Ms. Meismer?
Yes. Waiting on my Martin. There we go. Okay, on July 22nd, I presented a detailed presentation of the benefits at the city council meeting. There was some concern expressed about the Blue Cross Blue Shield bid at 3% over current. We had received a lower bid from Aetna, 1.76% increase over current, but the Aetna bid was not firm. They asked to review claims for the previous -- the last two months. And Bob with -- Bob Tracy, our consultant, is here with Gallagher. He reviewed the May and June claims, and they were all in excess of 100% of our premiums. So, that means what we paid in premiums for the month of May and June, the claims came in higher than what we paid, which would lend support to Aetna to increase their bid.
Did we turn that into them, Kim?
Ma'am?
Did we turn that into Aetna?
That information? We did not, no.
So, we don't know what they'd come back with? While we're there, I may forget.
Hello, Mayor, members of city council.
Good to see you, Kim.
You know, we have a good relationship partnership with our folks, whether it's Cigna, Aetna, Blue Cross, United Healthcare. And during this time of the year, it's very busy. So, what I generally do is have counsel with these reps and their very senior reps and discuss the cases with them. And Matt understood very well that we had a very strong proposal from Blue Cross and Blue Shield. Again, their underwriter really wanted to take a look at a couple more recent months, and it was just not going to be in our best interest to expose that. So, with that being said, with Blue Cross coming in extremely competitively, and they're really fighting for this business, I think it was a good -- we'll need them next year, you know, so.
Okay, that was my only question because I remembered from last meeting.
Yes, ma'am. So, we did our due diligence. We asked Blue Cross Blue Shield to reconsider and lower their bid to 1.5% with our same plan design. Our expectation was that Blue Cross Blue Shield would counter the request. They would offer to match Aetna at 1.76% increase or offer to match Aetna with some major plan changes. But we have good news. Blue Cross Blue Shield honored our request.
Really?
We are now at 1.5% increase over current. Same plan design as current, 0.26% less than Aetna's unstable bid of 1.76%, down 10.7% from the Blue Cross Blue Shield original bid of 12.2%. And they really came through, and they want to keep our business.
Is that really all that was -- I mean, what's their incentive to going that far?
They don't want to lose us.
Okay.
Because we didn't have that in our packet. We still had it at 3%.
Yes, we just finalized these, yes. Final numbers for FY 2018 for medical with Blue Cross Blue Shield come down to 6864 per employee per year. Dental with the standard is 304 per employee per year. Life and AD&amp;D with the standard is 62 per employee per year for a total of 7230. Our benefits budget is 6,500 per employee per year, and that would leave a benefit reserve estimate of 215, 350. But remember, we're nine months into the year and have only used 55,000 so far of the 150,000 that we expected. So, with that, staff recommends that council, acting as the trustees of the Employee Benefit Trust, approve the plans and rates for the FY 2018 Employee Benefit Plans as presented and authorize the city manager to sign the contracts with the providers. And I will answer -- Bob and I both will answer any questions that you have.
Okay, any questions?
I just have one, and it's more just, I guess, my own personal knowledge. But up until last year, the budgeted amount was you weren't contemplating using the reserve, but the last two years you have, is that to just buy down the reserve or what's the situation going on there?
The city manager is actually -- and this was before Mark got here, but the city manager establishes what we want to budget for our benefits budget. And we didn't want to increase the benefits budget any more than 6,500 for this year so that we could meet all our other requirements.
Okay, so, but moving forward, that reserve is going to dwindle away. So, next year, we'll be forced to?
Possibly. But again, we have over 400,000 in the reserve right now, and we're only expecting to use it worst-case scenario, 215. Best-case scenario, probably a third of that.
Kim, you might describe how the reserve is built. How does it accumulate?
The reserve accumulates by when we have -- because we budget 6,500 per employee per year, every month that money or a percentage of that money is put into the benefit reserve account to pay for the premiums. When we have benefit changes, when employees get married, get divorced, have children, children are over 26, and they come off of the coverage and the tiers of coverage change, then that changes. And so, each month, a little bit more and a little bit more goes into the benefit reserve.
Okay.
So, we stay with the same amount we budgeted last year per person?
Yes, ma'am.
Then we'll just have a little bit more in the reserve when that --
Yes, ma'am.
If we have any catastrophic claims or anything of that nature, that's what that could come in and counter. So, I'm pleased that it's staying the same.
Yes.
Because you didn't think that might be last year.
Right, right.
How many years have we been with Blue Cross Blue Shield?
This will be our fifth year if we --
Fifth year, okay.
Yes.
Any other questions by council?
No.
Okay, then we need a motion. Are you looking forward to, Ms. Meismer, for this organization to approve the FY 2018 Employee Benefits Plan as presented?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
So moved.
We have a motion? Second. And a second. All in favor, please raise your hand. And the motion carries five to zero. Thank you and --
Thank you.
Thank you for coming here again.
Good morning, Mayor.
So, at 6:21, we will go back into our regular session. See if I can get the page turned here. Will be an item number eight A, which is resolution number 28-2017 authorizing the transfer of the ownership of funds from the city of Kerrville to the city of Kerrville Employee Benefits Trust to pay for the employee-related group benefits for fiscal year 2018.
Yes, ma'am. Due to the action taken by the trustees of the Employee Benefit Trust to approve the FY 2018 Employee Benefit Plans, council will now need to consider approval of the resolution authorizing the transfer of funds from the city of Kerrville to the city of Kerrville Employee Benefit Trust to pay for employee benefits for FY 2018. Staff recommends city council authorize the transfer of funds in the amount not to exceed $6,500 per employee from the city of Kerrville to the city of Kerrville Employee Benefit Trust to pay for employee benefits for FY 2018 and to authorize use of funds from the Employee Benefit Trust Reserve Account if needed.
And all that will be in the motion? Okay, because it isn't on the agenda item in the resolution. Is that correct? So, we do it -- what I'm getting at is do we have to also say and authorize use of funds in the reserve account as needed?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to approve resolution as presented?
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
Motion is a second. All in favor, please raise your hand. And motion carries five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you again. Item number eight B is resolution number 29-2017 setting forth the ad valorem property tax rate to be considered for adoption for the 2017 tax year and calling two public hearings prior to the adoption of said rate and calling a public hearing prior to the adoption of the fiscal year 2018 budget as required by both the city's charter and state law. Ms. Yarborough?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. This is the first of the process working toward our adopting the tax rate and the budget for this year. And this is required by state law that we publish this notice of public hearing. We'll have two public hearings on the tax rate and one public hearing on the budget. This is also required by the city charter that we publish a budget summary for the public, and this sets the date and the time for the public to come for these public hearings.
And those dates are?
Oh, I'm sorry. The dates will be the first -- the public -- first public hearing for the tax will be on August 22nd as well as the public hearing for the budget. And the second public hearing for the tax rate will be September 12th. And these will both be published in both of the local papers so that the public is aware of it and will also be on our website.
And that rate is?
This is the proposed rate for the taxes at 56.25, which is a 2.13% over the effective tax rate of 55.14. And then, of course, at the bottom is the -- will be the summary of the budget to be presented also at the public hearings.
Okay. Any questions from Ms. Yarborough by council or anyone in the audience? If not, I will look for a motion to approve the attached resolution. It will be by a record vote, setting the proposed ad valorem tax rate to be considered for adoption for 2017 tax year, .5625 per hundred valuation, and calling for two public hearings of the proposed ad valorem tax rates required by law and publication of a general summary of proposed budget in the public hearing of the proposed fiscal year 2018 budget is required. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion is a second, and we will have a record vote for?
It's not necessary for this resolution.
It isn't?
It's later in the process.
Okay. So, is that all that we need to do at this point, then?
We need to vote.
We need to vote now.
Okay. To?
Mayor, I think someone wants to speak.
To adopt resolution number 29-2017. Motion is a second. All in favor? I'm sorry.
I think somebody wants to.
You want to speak?
I would catch all this, like, if you were.
Twenty-second.
Twenty-second.
It will be the next schedule regular meeting. Okay, we're ready for a vote then. All in favor, adopting resolution 29-2017. Motion carries five to zero. Eight C is resolution number 30-2017 approving or disapproving Kerr Central Appraisal District's fiscal year 2018 budget. Ms. Sharon is here from KCAD, so I will ask you to step forward. I will ask if council has any questions. Our -- Ms. Yarborough, did you -- I didn't know who wanted to present this. You put it on the agenda, but?
Uh, no. Good.
Okay. This is the budget which KCAD will be asking us to approve. We have a copy of it in here. They asked us to pass resolution number 30-2017 to approve this budget, the city's portion of which will go towards these expenses. The only thing that just for public comment, Ms. Constantine?
Constantinidis.
I thought I said that pretty well. Would be I didn't see in 2017 any listing for debt service, but you did have a payment, did you not, your first payment in May?
Yes, our payment started in May on the construction loan that we took out. And so, that's why there's a new line item for 18, which is at 51,000. So, that makes up 4.76% of our budget increase this year, and our total is 5.5.
Okay, so that was probably from your building fund. I did see that, so you will have, I don't know, you got a pretty good deal, it looks like to me, for that debt service. That's a pretty good rate.
4.35%.
And we'll cover --
Yes.
And for how many years?
22 years.
Okay. So, other than that, we have some consulting services, which I know you have each year for appraisers who come in for certain commercial uses.
Right, utilities and also commercial.
Okay, and we have a number of appraisal, what do you call them, people who oppose their rates?
Yes, protest.
Protest, there you go. So, we budget for that. Are there any other questions? They have a very detailed account of what all of their budget items are in here, and we have some board members here, I believe, too, as well. So, we appreciate your attendance.
I have a couple of questions. One, the consulting fees that we're talking about, appraisals and legal expense, is there an actual amount from 17 or is the budget amount actually what you spend? Is it?
There's an amount in the description. Let's see. 5090. Capital Appraisal, who does our utilities, they charge us 14,680 a year. And then we have Eagle.
So, that's basically a contract rate you're paying at a flat fee.
Yeah, those are contracts we have. And then we just have an extra 3,320 in there in case we have to hire an expert witness.
That's on page seven.
Yeah, I saw that.
Yes, on seven, I'm sorry.
That was -- okay, so the legal aspect, is that an actual amount or is that -- that's a as-needed, right?
That's as-needed, yes.
Do you know?
It depends on how many lawsuits we have going on.
Do you know roughly what the 17 amount was?
Uh, not off the top of my head.
I can get that for you.
The monthly retainer is two hundred and fifty.
Yeah.
And then whatever.
We just changed law firms also.
Yeah. And then there's a... I think it's just a typo, but... And it doesn't matter to anything we're doing here tonight. But on the salaries line for 2018, you got the same number in there as seventeen, but it's actually less. Yeah, the difference is correct, but the eighteen amount is...
Five oh oh six line.
Oh, okay. Yes.
And I think what we see on the next agenda item, we'll see what they do with their budget excess.
What's the salary reserve thing?
The salary reserve, that is additional that we had left... Excuse me, on seventeen because we changed. We had some people quit, rehires. And we had a little bit extra left from what we had budgeted for, for seventeen.
Okay.
And I've got some new people coming in that I've got to send to training. And of course, as they pass their levels, we'll up their salary so we can retain them also.
Okay. Those are my questions.
Any other questions by council? From the audience? If not, I will entertain a motion to approve Resolution Number three oh dash two oh one seven approving or disapproving Kirk Central Appraisal District's, so their 2018 budget.
I move to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve?
Second.
And a second. All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries five to zero. Item number eight D is a follow-up, which is Resolution Number three-two... I don't know why we did three-one and three-two in different order. But anyway, three-two dash two oh one seven providing for the city's approval or disapproval of an amendment to the Kirk Central Appraisal District's 2016 fiscal budget year. So if you would explain that one to us, please.
Pressler Thompson had just completed our 2016 budget... Our audit for our budget. And we had an excess of seventy-six thousand, five hundred and eleven dollars. And that was arrived on some expenses that we were able to save on for sixteen. We had people changing, leaving and hiring people at a lower rate. Fuel costs had gone down from what we had originally budgeted for. And every little bit just kind of added up. And what we ask is to retain this. We're in the middle of our construction of our building. And there's some things that were not part of the loan, such as security system, telephone system, landscaping, and some new furniture to bring our... You know, get us complete to be able to move in later this year. So we're asking to retain this excess funds.
Seventy-six thousand, five hundred and eleven dollars. And by the way, it goes to increase the fund... Building Reserve Fund is what it says in our notes. It will go there. And it'll increase that to one hundred and fifty-five thousand, one hundred and forty dollars.
See, we used part of our reserve this past year to buy our land, do our studies, and get everything done.
Right.
To start building.
Okay. Any motion?
I have some questions.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, let me see if I can explain it. I've been kind of watching this process for the last few years and I kind of wonder about it. On the surface, the first thing that caught my eye was basically we're... I know it's not really exactly like this, but we're basically making a choice of a building fund versus giving the money back to these entities.
Yes, sir.
Close to sixty percent of these entities are school districts. And so in my head, I'm weighing priority between public schools and a building for Kirk had. So in my head, I'm going to go public schools every time, okay? And I understand we're not voting for them. We're just voting for the city. But anyways, so there's that. The other is, we're putting this... We're essentially trying to keep it back to fill a building fund, essentially. So my question would be, why are we not just budgeting some expenses to the building fund rather than this sort of backdoor budgeting? It's kind of a sloppy budgeting if we just wait till the end of the year, see what our surplus is, and then put it in. Why do we do it that way?
First of all, when they... We have to, like right now, we worked on our 2018 budget. We don't always know what our expenses are going to be. You know, we were hoping to be able to build a building, but there were so many steps we had to go through, we did not know whether or not we were going to get the new building. And we've been trying to save our money over the past few years. Anybody knows me, I'm very tight on my budget when it comes to spending. So I try to, you know, save money to go to that project is what I've been trying to do. And...
Yeah, I'm not saying people are being like stealing money or something like that. I'm not trying to say that.
Yeah, no, I'm just...
I'm just saying it would... I would rather budgeting be preemptive rather than retroactive.
Right.
And in this case, what we've got going on is... And we've only been doing this for the last three or four years. We weren't doing it before that. I'm not sure what changed as to why we started.
Well, in 2016 also, I had an appraiser leave that was getting a decent salary. And it took a few months for us to replace him. So during that time, of course, you have his salary that's not being used. And then you hire somebody at a lower rate. And then I had another gentleman whose wife came down with cancer, so he had to take a leave without pay. So that... Things like that is what added to my surplus for sixteen.
Right, and that kind of gets me to my last question, and I promise it is the last. Is it actually appropriate for something like that? We're talking about salary. If the employee wasn't there, then Kirk had essentially would have been providing maybe less efficient services during that period or unable to fulfill some services. And so is that truly savings? Or is that money that really should go back to the entities because they didn't receive value for their dollar on that?
Well, my staff, even if we're short, everybody works really hard and picks up the slack. And like right now, we're in the process of bringing in two new people. It's hard to find somebody at times that wants to work in this field.
That's the total budget surplus, not just the city's share, correct?
Right, that's the total. The city's portion is ten thousand, forty-six.
So it's a minute amount, really, within the scope of a school budget, probably. And they do have a building fund here, the Building Reserve Fund, that they budget for.
Correct. That was just, you know, exact to the fact, which is kind of what my question is, you know? It'd be better just to budget.
It's conservative. It's very conservative stuff. Twenty-eight thousand for the school district. Not even a whole teacher, is it?
No, but it's not a whole building either. So, I mean, we're going to compare apples to apples. It's a valid question to ask, is all.
Okay.
So anyways...
That's fine. Any other questions by council? If not, do I have a motion?
So moved.
To approve? To approve?
Yes, okay.
I think you actually have to say that we're voting to approve it or...
That's why I'm asking. To approve Resolution Number three-two dash two oh one seven. To amend?
I'll move approval of Resolution Number thirty-two dash two oh one seven.
Okay. We have a second? I'll second.
Well, I will.
Okay.
Go ahead.
All in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed, motion carries four to one. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item number eight E is Resolution Number thirty-one dash two oh one seven creating the Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee, establishing its purpose, membership size, term, procedures, and related matters. Mr. McDaniel, did you want to speak to this? Or would you like me to just give the overview?
I'd love to speak to it.
Okay, please do.
So after a lot of anticipation and I think some planning, we're ready to take that first big step in setting up the steering committee for the comprehensive plan update. And in talking with all of you, I know that you share my enthusiasm for this project. And the community, I think, is also very much looking forward to it. Very pleased to go ahead and present to you tonight, then, the forty-two individuals that have been slated to serve on this committee. There are the six nominees from each of you, plus the Planning and Zoning Commission, and of course, each of you on the steering committee as well. And that's how we get to the forty-two. So with tonight, if you appoint this slate, then the next step would be we notify the slate officially that they've been appointed. We give them some sense of their meeting schedule. We will not know any detail... Some detail, but not final detail about the schedule until after we meet with the consultants that are going to be helping us with this project. I have shared with you all a preliminary schedule, which I expect we'll need to adjust based upon some input from them as well as from you. So you all will be interviewing consultants on August fifteenth. It'll be an open session. And there's three finalists that we're going to be recommending to you. So you'll be meeting from one until four on that date. And real excited about the three that we received as finalists. There's a total of five actually proposed. And the three that we are recommending that you interview have all done extensive work in Texas. And so I think that they're going to offer a lot of great expertise for us to consider. So looking forward to that. Then, once we meet with them and we'll flesh out the schedule completely, what I would anticipate and hope for is that a first meeting of this group in September, probably late September, given where we are today. And that would be basically a formation meeting where we're talking about the schedule, the charge to the steering committee, what they can expect through the process. This resolution also appoints the chair for the committee. And so what staff is recommending is that you appoint the chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission, Bob Waller, who has also been through comprehensive planning process. He's also been in several leadership positions in the community, including on EIC and other groups and entities. So very well-versed in what needs to happen here. And I've had some conversation with him about what to expect. And he's very enthusiastic about serving in that role. So again, this is just making the appointment of the individuals. You'll notice that some of these are not residing inside city limits. And that was something that the council wanted to consider, is some individuals that were outside city limits. And so the list does include some individuals in Kirk County that are not inside the City of Kerrville. So with that, Mayor and Council will be glad to answer any questions that you have about this particular item as well as the process that we're about to undertake.
Any questions for Mr. McDaniel? Go ahead.
Yes, I do. The quorum, Mark, is only sixteen of the forty-two.
Right.
Not quite half.
Well, and I think that quorum was arrived at. If you take out the council and you take out the Planning and Zoning Commission, you know, who's left? And so that's where we got to sixteen. It could be half of the forty-two if you'd like, but that's how we got to that number. We felt like that you all would be there and so would the Planning and Zoning Commission, but...
I see.
Can you tell us where you're planning? It isn't part of the resolution, but where will we plan to meet?
Well, that's part of the formation meeting. So I want to visit with you in particular, Mayor, about the initial location. We certainly want someplace that's large enough and for breakouts, not just a large meeting. We need to talk about what time of day is best for everyone. Is that going to be a breakfast meeting? Is it going to be lunch? Is it going to be in the evening? Or maybe it's a combination of all of those so that the public can also have an opportunity to attend. It will be all be public meetings. So the subcommittees will not form up until after the community comes together in a retreat, which I would expect at this point to be in January. And so the community will tell us what our principles and chapters will be. And then we'll decide on what committees will need to be appointed. And you all will populate those committees with the number of individuals that you see fit. And then each chair of each of those subcommittees will come from the steering committees so that you have that communication and that consistency and, you know, the continuum of effort with the steering committees, so...
When you say you all will staff the subcommittees, is that council or is that the full steering committee? Or who's doing? How is that going to work?
On the subcommittees?
Yes.
Okay, that'll be primarily staff and then whoever you all appoint as the chair. So but of course, you all could attend. One of you may end up being a chair. That's up to you all.
Oh, I see, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
How long do you expect the committee to function?
The steering committee, I would anticipate, would be in place until May or June of next year. It will be, you know, if we do it right, it'll be a lengthy process and involve a significant public improvement. And keep in mind that, you know, the public needs to weigh in, not just on the front end, but also after the committee, steering committee, has fleshed out a plan. They need to also weigh in on, you know, what the results have been. So we'll have community input all along the way, but in particular, on the front end and on the back end.
And I know we've talked about, you know, a number of town halls to, you know, engage the public. I've already spoken with some members of the community that are concerned about particular areas, you know, of interest and explained that we'll have subcommittees designated, you know, for neighborhoods or water or whatever particular interest they may have. Any other questions for Mr. McDaniel from this? If I could, I would just like to... I'm not going to read the entire resolution, of course. But I would like to read the names. And again, each council member had six nominees. And then, as Mr. McDaniel mentioned, members of council and then members of the planning and zoning. So the appointments being considered by name are Mark Bosma, Joe McKay. And council, if there's any questions as I go through this or comments, please stop me. Mark Bosma, Joe McKay, Leslie Barnett, James Kraft, Mike Welburn, Ward Jones, John Fleckenstein II, Leland Barnes, John Baker, Amber Thomason, Alan Noah, Jonathan Letts, Linda Bullard, Sandra Garcia, Karen Guerio, Ernesto Hernandez, Adrian Kruger, Carolyn Lipscomb, Linda Ables, Danny Almond, Fred Gamble, Sarah Hammond Distel, Charlie McCormick, Delane Seigerman, Elaine Dreeben, Walter Koenig, Mark Faust, Tina Woods, Charlie McElvein, Ed Livermore, council members, and then members of P and Z, Bob Waller, Garrett Harmon, Don Barnett, Mike Seigerman, Ruston Zubor, Thomas David Jones, and Marty Leonard.
Mayor, I think Elaine Dreeben's name is misspelled. I think there's an E at the end of Elaine.
At the end of Elaine, I wondered about that.
And there's an E at the end, in the second syllable of her last name. It's D-R-E-E-B-E-N.
Okay. Miss Brenda got that, I'm sure. Elaine Dreeben. Should be E-L-A-I-N-E. Capital D-R-E-E-B-E-N.
The spelling problem's probably mine. I did not excel at that.
Okay. So with that, is there any more discussion by council or questions? Okay, then I would look for a motion on item number eight E.
I'll be glad to move approval of...
Resolution.
Resolution thirty-one dash two oh one seven with grateful thanks to all these volunteers who said yes when the five of us asked them.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries five to zero. Okay, item number nine A is the official presentation of the proposed fiscal year 2017-18 budget. Can you let us get our other notebook here?
Paper was glued, it's got the...
Yeah, the other book. Oh, and I need to read the draft book back.
Ready?
And start us out, if you would, telling us exactly what you want to do. I will start out for the audience by saying some of you are here, but we've had three workshops already on the general fund, the water and sewer fund and capital improvement, hot tax fund. What else did we do? We've talked about everything, I think, so far except EIC. So you're going to give an overview. This is not a public hearing. We've had open hearings and we had participation from the public where we talked over all these areas. But tonight, you're going to give your official presentation or overview, correct?
That's right, Mayor. And thank you for that introduction. So this is the required by our charter that we submit a budget by the end of July, which we did with the city secretary. And this was after the workshops that the mayor mentioned. You can see on the slide that we had them on June twenty-first and then again July nineteenth and then finally on July twenty-fifth. A little unusual. Most cities don't introduce the budget until this point. But this is great because we've had a lot of those good discussions and you all have had the opportunity to dive in. And so I'm not going to go into a lot of detail, which is what we did in those workshops. This is a very high-level overview. And you are going to see a little bit of new information based upon some of my conversations with all of you. So again, this is the official presentation of the proposed budget as well as call for the public hearings, which you've already done.
Let me stop you real quick. So what's online is, has all the changes that you just referenced, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. So what's online and what you all have been... Has been delivered to you is the... So, what's online, and what you all have been, has been delivered to you, is the official proposed budget, and this presentation reflects that. I suspect there will be some amendments along the way. I already know of one small one that we're going to need to address, and so we'll just keep compiling those as we move through the process, as we hear from the public. And then, you all will have, you'll see the schedule later, that we'll go through before final adoption in late September. So, the theme of this budget, if there is a theme, and there is, is focusing on our future. And you can see, and this was mentioned in the manager's message, that, you know, among other things, we're focused on the comprehensive plan update, which you all just took initial action on, accelerated street surfacing and funding, which is looking at future maintenance of our streets, utility infrastructure, capacity improvements. This would be projects like Legion Lift Station, of course, the HEB Tennis Center renovations, opening of our sports complex, and also internal continuous improvement initiatives that are supported by our new Office of Innovation, with the hiring of Guillermo Garcia. At the same time, there's primary consideration given to maintaining comparable service levels, and making progress on your priorities, as you have expressed them in your retreat back in May. This next slide is a new graph. This puts all of the funds together, when you even, even the capital funds. This would be a good time to mention that, in prior years, the Council has not adopted appropriations for capital funds. I am asking you to do that this year, and that's why the number's quite a bit larger than what you're used to, the sixty-six million. But forty percent of that is general fund, and eighteen percent is water and sewer, capital projects, another eleven, and nine on the general side, and then you can see your debt service. So, this is a good picture of your entire budget, including capital funds and operating So, let's turn now to your largest fund, general fund. This is your tax-supported fund. We are balanced at twenty-six point eight million, so there's no change there from what you've seen previously. Also, a estimated reserve fund balance of twenty-seven percent, our goal is twenty-five. And then, the proposed budget will raise another hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars in property tax, which is a two percent increase in collections. And you can see there, over time, since fiscal year 2009, how the revenue has grown, and the blue represents general fund, and the red represents debt service. So, it has grown. We've only had one tax adjustment, and that was nine years ago. So, we've had the same tax rate for the last nine years. So, all this growth has been through growth in values. Let's see, this next slide, the proposed tax rate, as you heard from Sandra earlier, no tax increase, still at fifty-six cents. Again, same rate, last nine years. The effective tax rate would be fifty-five cents, and the difference between the effective and the rate that's being proposed, or your current rate, is a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars, if you were to reduce the tax rate to the effective rate. And that amounts to just over twenty-one dollars per year, for the average taxable home of a hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars. Other fee adjustments that are included in the budget, the first one, we discussed at your first budget workshop, emergency medical services, using a CPI for this industry of two point eight percent, so some minor adjustments to transport and mileage, and some support fees for emergency medical service. We also have some other smaller fee adjustments. You can see those back in the appendix of your budget document. For example, an overtime rate for construction inspection, going from thirty-five dollars to fifty dollars. This is the only adjustment for building inspection or development fees. And then parks, there are several minor adjustments, some in some cases, just a restructuring, where fees are deleted or adjusted, and those are contained on pages two thirty-nine through two forty-one of your document. And then finally, we do have a rate increase for solid waste and garbage service, and this is as a result of our contract with our, with Republic. In our contract, they are allowed an increase per the CPI, the local CPI, and so in this case, it's one point eight percent effective next fiscal year. In terms of expenditures, public safety accounts for forty-nine percent. This is not unusual, you would find this in most cities. Personnel as well is the largest expense by category. This is a rundown, if you look at the increases, if you look at last year's budget compared to the proposed budget, the increase overall was one point one seven six oh one seven. So, if you then kind of reconcile that, well, what makes up the difference here in terms of those increases? Well, these are related to, first of all, personnel-related expense of six hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars. And then you can see below that, where those are itemized in detail. So, they include the average of the three percent merit of two fifty-five, the two percent COLA for police and fire, which is a hundred and seventy-one, and all these include, by the way, the TMRS, their pension and taxes, too. So, these are gross numbers for all of it. Step increases for police and fire of fifty-five thousand, three new regular full-time positions of ninety-eight thousand, and again, that's the engineering inspector and the...
Parks.
Yeah, well, the one in parks. And then, I'm sorry, help me out.
IT.
Sorry?
IT for police?
Yeah, I'm sorry, the records technician for Police Department, where you have the new video. Thank you. And then we also have the pension contribution rate adjustment. This is where the rate that we're being passed on by Texas Municipal Retirement System is going up, so that's another sixty-six thousand. Full year funding for the sports complex, this is just the personnel component of that. These folks are not new positions, but it's a full year, and so this is all personnel costs. And then we've actually eliminated a position in EMS billing, and then some minor reductions in other areas, but most of that ninety-one thousand reduction is that position. And again, that includes benefits, as well as taxes and pension.
Is that the only position, I'm sorry, that we would eliminate? Because I have never seen that before, but is that the only?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and there's some shifting, if you look at the personnel count back in your appendix, there's some shifting from department to department, but this is the only reduction of the regular full-time. There are some part-time positions being reduced, like with the parks position that you mentioned earlier, being replaced by one regular full-time. Then also, there's the increase in street maintenance funding of two hundred and fifty thousand, bringing that up to one point five million. The increase for a full-year sports complex, this is everything but the personnel, a hundred and seventy-eight thousand, most of that's equipment, but it's also supplies and services and different line items. And then, an increase for abatement funds, for demolitions, and then a contingency increase. So, there typically is a contingency of a hundred and fifty thousand in the general fund. I did increase that to two hundred and fifty thousand, not knowing what might be coming our way, and this being my new budget, I wanted a little bit of flexibility, so that's in there as well. So, total is one point two million. So, you can see, if you add all that up, and if you were not to include the increases, it's actually a reduction by the time you take those out. So, all the other expenses basically remain the same, realizing that last year's budget also had some one-time things in it as well. But when you add all that up, that reconciles the increase.
Mark, I got a question on the three percent increase. If we were to lower that, is there a way that we could do it enough to adopt the effective tax rate this year?
The effective tax rate, just on the general fund side, would net you a hundred and forty-five thousand back. And so, one, if you reduce that, you know, you would, you'd end up probably somewhere around one percent average merit. But, you know, there'd be a number of options that y'all could look at, if you were interested in pursuing a reduction in the tax rate.
I'd like to look into that.
Okay, well, if the Council is desirous of that, we can bring you options, you know, for, if you reduce it by a hundred and forty-five thousand to get to the effective, these are like, you know, five options that you might have in looking at that.
Would that be an option, the three percent merit?
Anything is, it's completely up to the Council. It's your budget, at this point, once I deliver it to you today.
Mark, I'm afraid I missed what you said about increase for abatement funds and contingency.
Yes.
Did you say that a hundred and fifty thousand has been the contingency in the general fund?
In the past, yes.
So, that's been reduced some.
No, so this is the increase. This is only the increase that's represented with a hundred and twenty-five thousand.
Oh, I see.
Right, a hundred that is contingency, and the other twenty-five is for some demolition.
Building abatement.
Yes.
Thank you.
And that increase in the street maintenance, that's in addition to the nine hundred and fifty-eight thousand that you're going to use from prior year funding.
Yes, absolutely. And in fact, some of that work will end up being done this calendar year, like the November, October, November timeframe, and even though it's, you know, being carried over, it's going to be done this calendar year.
Yeah, so, just because everybody talks about it all the time, can you reiterate the number, overall, that we're looking to spend on streets for this budget year?
It should be in here.
It's close to two point five million, by the time you have your carryover funds, as well as the one point five million. And what we intend to do is let some pretty big contracts, and this would be for the reconstruction, the most expensive work that we have, that we just can't handle in-house, especially with any volume. So, the overlay, we've been doing a lot of overlay, we think that we can do more if we were to contract that out, we think we could get some good pricing. And also, by having a larger contract, that will also help with your pricing.
I just wanted, for the record, that the number is big, that's all.
So, the next slide is, moving now to the Water and Sewer Fund, no fee or rate increases proposed, and this would be on your, either your base fee or your volumetric rates. We are projecting a one percent growth in sales, just by sheer growth in sales, not by growth in the overall rate. So, estimated cash and equivalents at the end of the year, we estimate to be twenty-eight percent. It does shift around on us throughout the year. For example, in the early part of the year, that reserve's going to be lower, because we're not selling as much water. But by the end of the year, we do estimate that we'll be at the twenty-eight percent. Here's expenditures by department, and then by category. Obviously, you know, the water and wastewater costs on the left are your largest expenses. Sewer is, sewer wastewater, and water reclamation are all the same thing, so as you see the different titles up there. And then we also have a transfer to debt service of the thirty-two point four percent. And then, you can look at the right, and again, your personnel is going to be the largest part of your expense, other than the debt service that I just mentioned. Hotel occupancy tax fund, which is one of our four largest funds, we are increasing this one, but only by a hundred and five thousand. And that is due to, first of all, an increase to the CVB fund for personnel-related expenses, and I did, after our last meeting with them, and after your last budget workshop, I did increase their advertising by fifteen thousand dollars, which is pretty much what they spent back into fiscal year twenty sixteen. So, it's a modest increase for them. Overall, it's not, you know, the additional amount that they had asked for, for enhanced advertising, and it doesn't, it's not even the baseline number that they'd asked for. The overall is at nine fifteen, nine hundred and fifteen thousand, and we had earlier programmed nine hundred thousand, and they asked for nine hundred and forty-seven thousand. The contingency also is an increase, depending upon what the Council wants to do with regard to either bricks and mortar projects, or any other projects. I wanted to have a little bit of money already appropriated, certainly coming back to you for anything in terms of expenditure, but I just felt like that it was prudent to have a level of contingency in this fund, for things that might develop over the next few And then on the golf fund, there's actually a decrease in expenditures here. We saw where the revenue was not coming in. We did have a banner year a few years back, when the Fredericksburg course was closed. We don't think that, you know, we can really count on that continuing, and I think what we're seeing today is more realistic. And as you heard from Scott, you know, the industry's down nationwide. So, we did ask them to go back and scrub their expenditures, and they reduced their budget, their proposed budget, anyway, by ninety-two thousand dollars. We are proposing a modest rate increase. If you're not a senior, if you're a senior, we're keeping the rates the same, with the idea that, you know, the seniors are on a fixed income. So, we would increase a dollar per round, in most cases, and this generates about twenty-five thousand dollars. And that helps to the bottom line, because this budget has been in the deficit the last two years. And that's also why we're proposing a general fund subsidy of eighty thousand dollars, to keep them in the black, and have a more realistic budget as we look to the next year. So, our next steps, we are looking at a public hearing on the proposed budget on the twenty-second, along with your first public hearing on the tax rate. Then on the twelfth, your second public hearing on the tax rate. And then we begin with our ordinances, the first reading of both the budget and the tax rate ordinance. And finally, on the twenty-sixth, prior to the fiscal year beginning October first, you would have second readings on both of those ordinances, as well as your fee resolution, adopting any fees that support the new budget that I mentioned earlier. That's the extent of the presentation. I do have loaded here all the slides, and there's several of them from your prior presentations and your workshops, if we need to refer to those. But I would, many questions as we move through the public hearings, and also would be happy to answer any of those now from the Council.
Mark, I find this document, the one that has to be published, difficult to reconcile. Can you explain to me how the general fund is decreasing this year, when we've just had the slide about where the increases are?
I'm not sure which...
How can this be? It says that there is an increase, a decrease in both revenues and expenditures in the general fund.
Was it two million? Was it two million? I don't think so. I think it's capital.
That relates to the budget payment of two million, thirty-five thousand, transferred to debt, and appropriated back to capital.
Okay, so Sandra, just, this is, has to do with the process of amending the budget through the, through the last fiscal year, the current fiscal year. The two million, that was for the reuse project, that was an amendment. And then you also amended the budget...
So, that inflated this year's budget...
That's correct.
Compared to next year's budget.
That's correct.
Okay, okay.
Yes.
For revenue.
Yes. And then the transfer as well, for the, from the surplus, for the fire truck, the seven hundred and fifty thousand.
Okay. We didn't have EIC in this presentation either. That will, you'll ask us to put that in there as well? Or, how will you handle that?
So, they are meeting on, to discuss their budget. They had already one discussion, this is the EIC Board, they already had one discussion on it, and they asked for it to be brought back, to have another discussion. So, they also asked KEDC to rework some numbers, or at least give some additional thought to their remarks. So, that'll be coming back to them this month, and then we'll have a firmer budget, but what you see now is what has reflected in what was proposed to them in your document, your book. So, what we can do, Mayor, we can answer questions now, or we can, we'll know more after they meet, and then you all will still have your public hearings, and we can have more discussion about that at that time.
Okay, that'll be fine. I have a breakdown of, you know, what they're looking at, so...
Right.
That'll be... I had a question for you on page thirteen, in the budget summary that you gave us, at the bottom of the page, the component unit funds. You put, let's see, wait, I'm sorry, back up to seventy and seventy-one, the capital project funds. When we had our list that you provided for us, our spreadsheet on the Community Investment Plan, you asked us to adopt the fiscal year 2018 projects, as listed there. And it's a total of six million dollars. When you go to page thirteen, on the general capital projects expenditures, it's four point eight nine oh six seven six. And I see where that line stops. I added, through the five hundred thousand for the parking garage repairs, that's where that four point eight nine oh number comes from. But you're asking us to approve the full six million, so we didn't do it that way in the, when you go to the water and sewer spreadsheet, the total is seven point three million. And your budget summary is indeed seven three one six six oh eight. So, the water, sewer, capital projects on page thirteen corresponds with your spreadsheet, but the general capital projects does not.
So, the difference there is just where we're including the different numbers on those two different pages. So, the page that's the official page, that you all, when you all adopt the budget, it's going to be at the fund level. So, on page thirteen, it's going to look something... So on page 13, it's going to look something like that. And so it won't be that spreadsheet in the back that details out the projects and the different funding sources. It'll be this page where you're adopting the total budget for that fund. So that said, I think the difference is probably item number, number 70, the general capital projects, the 1.2 million, that's part of it. So we're reclassifying, we're classifying some of those expenditures up in program funds and not down in capital funds versus the spreadsheet that you see.
Ah.
So some of the, the difference between those two numbers, Mayor, to get to the 6 million, you're going to include, for example, the general capital projects, the 1.2 million, that transfer?
Yeah.
Okay, so some of that's going to be up above in the, what we're calling program funds.
Yeah, look at line 70.
So the spreadsheets in the back are really tools to help you see how each project is funded individually over time and by year, and as a 10-year plan, but this is the actual fund level that we're looking at in terms of adoption.
Okay, and on page 13, so it won't, I just wondered why they were all listed on page one of your thing. When we, on the water sewer, they were spread out, you know, over the, all the different projects over the different years, so, but my question is, are you going to ask us to fund? I see, I know landfill comes from within, comprehensive plan also comes from, you showed us the sources there. The public safety complex, we talked about that's for a need study.
Right.
You're going to want to do that in 18?
Yes.
But it's somewhere else in the budget summary?
Maybe, under general capital project.
No, that's up here.
No, I think the difference is that the 1.2, which is the capital transfer from reserve.
And all the rest is, oh, the 6 million?
Yes.
So all the rest that you're asking us to do? Okay.
Yes.
And is there something else that we could choose to do with the 1.2? Because we do have an additional amount in the regular capital asset fund, don't we, for vehicles and those kind of things?
We do, but when you look at what's coming, and I think we had a sheet on that, in the next few years, you know, very expensive items, each pumper's about $750,000. We don't have money set aside for that. So this, what this does, it helps us to smooth the impact on your annual budget, so you don't have these spikes one year, and then the next year you're not buying, and the next year you got another spike, because we just don't have cash set aside to purchase these. So this does help us to smooth that out by taking some of this reserve to make those purchases, and then maybe a little bit from general fund at the same level over time. But to answer your initial question, Mayor, y'all have the discretion to do with that different, you know, whatever you'd like.
Well, I take the recommendation of the departments, if these are things that are needed. I know we had a kind of a general list of engine, fire engines and things like that, so, but if that's, if those are the needs and those are the priorities, we look to you to tell us those kinds of things. For instance, you know, my thought was the refurbishing of the fire station central. Is that something that we can indeed look to put off for a few years?
This is the one that actually is in it, one of the out years, isn't it?
Yeah.
So this plan, we talked a little bit about this in your last budget workshop. Anything beyond fiscal year 18 is really just a planning document. We're not asking you to adopt anything beyond the current year. And, you know, for example, we know that we may end up restructuring some of our debt on the utility side, which could change the picture for some of the projects beyond 18, or even in 18, but probably beyond 18. So just think of those as planning guides and documents for future consideration. We may ask you to actually adopt them as a plan, but not set in stone until you actually appropriate the money through the budget process. So right now, we're just, again, looking at fiscal year 18. And then even if you appropriate it, if it's over $50,000, and in some cases even if it's less, it's coming back to you to authorize it. So, you know, throughout the year, circumstances are going to change, and the budget is really a plan. And, and so you'll have that flexibility going forward, Mayor. If you feel like, you know, next year this time, we have something that's really kind of raised its head as a bigger priority, you know, we can certainly make adjustments as we go along. But this helps. The other thing it does for us is, as we move through the comprehensive planning process, it gives some fodder for these committees to be able to consider in terms of our planning for capital and infrastructure type of projects, so they understand what's on the drawing board, and they can have input into that, not only the projects themselves, but how we're going to fund those projects.
Everything that we're undertaking going forward with the water sewer is absolutely mandatory and needed to be done probably yesterday, so that's good. And that was our number one priority, so I'm pleased with being able to fund some of those projects that I think will help our water quality and wastewater quality and all of the above. And again, this isn't a public hearing, there will be a public hearing to specifically get feedback as people, this is online, is that correct, for the public?
Yes, and then there's a copy in the library, and there's a copy with the city secretary.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? If not, thank you for the presentation, and I think we have, well, we may each have meetings with you as we go through and chew this up a little bit more too.
Certainly.
Going forward, I hit you with a lot of stuff today, so that's mostly just being able to wrap my head around what came from where. Okay, item number 10 is the city manager's report. Do you have anything else to add?
I do.
Okay.
EA is passing you out the monthly capital report. This also is online after this meeting. I do want to highlight a few projects real quick. First of all, on the reuse distribution mains, you can see there on the chart or the schedule that we still have estimated completion of January 2018, and a lot of the pipe is in the ground, and we've got piers now drilled at the river crossing. This project is moving very fast, probably a little bit of slowdown with the recent rain that we've had, but moving along nicely. Then also, the next item is the reuse pond and pump station. Still spring of 2018 is estimated completion, and then you can see there the comments that we're at either 95 or 90% on a number of items, and that the underdrain pump assembly is only at 50%. So these are really also coming together nicely. We're not at the point where we poured concrete, we're just doing compaction right now, and then we're finishing up the actual pump cans at this time. So some of you have expressed an interest in seeing that project as we get near the pouring of concrete, so perhaps we can set up a time to do a tour of that facility. And then the next one I want to mention is River Trail West. We're at 60% design, and we've given comments back to Hewitt at the end of last month. So we still think in, during August, which is obviously this month, that we'll have a design complete. Then we'll be back to you all with, you know, this is what we think it's going to cost, this is the design, and how it's going to look, how we're going to tie in back at the Deert Center, and so we'll have some more discussion with you all about that. And then finally, I want to comment on the tennis center improvements. We, you all allowed us to work with one of the proposers as far as the design, and we're at the point now, we're ready to bring back to you a contract for consideration. And so that will probably be within the next 30 days, that we'll be back on your agenda to ask you to move forward with that design contract. Something new is the next several pages, and this is just information from TechDOT, that, you know, a lot of what we have going on in Curville are TechDOT projects, because all of our main thoroughfares are TechDOT facilities. So I thought it'd be helpful for you and the public to also know what TechDOT is doing in Curville. You mentioned, you heard Brenda mention earlier, the most immediate work that's going to be done are the repairs to State Highway 27, but I'll allow you to look at these projects at your leisure. I do want to mention also that I had a discussion with the mayor about one of our upcoming workshops being on transportation, so we would have TechDOT in, we'd discuss their projects, discuss our priorities, what's on the horizon and so forth. So I think that would make for a very good briefing on one of your off weeks that we currently have scheduled. In addition to that, we are looking at canceling your second meetings in November and December, unless some urgent business comes up, and then we might need a special call meeting, but it would be on one of those off weeks, because the holidays fall in the second, for your second meeting, right in that timeframe, so we'll be looking at canceling those meetings. And I mentioned earlier, again, the consultant interviews on August 15th, starting at 1:00 in this room, we'll have each of them come in individually and make their presentations.
And you said on that, you had five, and you narrowed to three?
Yes.
Okay.
The three were neck and neck, and we just felt like it would be good to compare and contrast what each one has to offer, and it allows us to make even a better decision.
Okay. Is that it?
That's it, yes ma'am.
Okay. Any questions for Ms. Daniel? If not, then item number 11 is items for future agendas. You've given us a number of those, so does any council member have anything in particular we need to put on? Okay, then item number 12, we don't need, we've already discussed that. I guess that is all that we have for today. So we will adjourn at 7:21. Thank you all for coming.